All right, good evening. Shall we open this meeting? We'll call the order of the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting of April 17, 2023. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Burton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman? Freeman is absent. McGee?
Here.
Mahal?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Nine in favor?
Okay, if you please join me, standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we pray to thank you for the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us, our country, our community, and our freedom. We pray to thank you for all the current military service members and for the countless men and women veterans who have served throughout our country's history. We thank you for that service and their sacrifice. We also thank you for our police and fire first responders in our community and throughout our country. They respond to individuals in need no matter what, and we pray to thank you for that, and we pray for their safety and well-being. We ask tonight that you give each of us compassion, courage, patience, wisdom as we conduct our city's business here this evening. We ask for these things, in Christ's name, amen. Okay, item three, under public comment, we have two individuals registered this evening. We have Jackie Hollander. Hi, Jackie. Would you come up here, please, in front of the microphone? I think it's on, it is. Welcome.
Thank you.
We don't bite.
I'm scared, I feel like I'm gonna pass out up here.
Oh, my goodness. Don't be scared.
I'm not used to talking in front of people I don't know, so I am scared to death. I want to thank this beautiful town for letting me live here. I am your silent, until the past two weeks, senior citizen. And your town has been so wonderful to me. Your chief of police has made sure that I was safe and sound here. The Belvidere Police Department is the greatest in the world. And then there's your fire department that on August 2nd, when my heart stopped, they came in and they saved my life because COVID caused my heart to stop. And I now have a dual pacemaker. But this town has truly been good to me. The tornado, I am so sorry for the victims that were hurt in your Apollo because my life involved my whole career, the music industry. So seeing those people hurt at a concert really bothered me. My life was more on a national level, sadly worldwide level, but I am dealing with it. I'm losing my place here, I'm very, very sorry. Anyway, my condolences to their family and to your town. My car was totaled. I had a Hummer H3, and I had just gotten it back, and I had parked it where no trees would hit it, I thought, so it would be safe. And of course, I think every tree near and far decided to hit my Hummer. I mean, it looked like a beaver dam on top of my Hummer. And of course, I have been told it is totaled. I am a senior citizen, I had liability because full coverage was so high, and I felt, oh, nothing's gonna affect my car, but it did. I only putter around Belvidere going to your stores, and that's it. And of course, it's totaled, and Hummers now have gone up triple in value. Used cars have gone up triple in value. What my car now is worth is way, way high. Try to find one, and you're gonna really be paying a lot of money. I don't know what I'm gonna do. But everybody keeps talking about an act of God. I am a Christian. My God cares about people. My God believes in putting people's lives back together. My God believes in compassion, love, kindness to others. And I don't think my God ever brought this tornado into the city of Belvidere. The devil may have, but not God. I went down to your museum. I've been down there talking to the girls since fall. I have one of the largest rock and roll memorabilia's that you've ever seen. As a matter of fact, it's been talked about in your worldwide media. And I thought, well, I know the hard rock wants it all, but they've never done anything for me. We've played at them, but they never did anything for me, but your city has. And I offered them, on loan, all of this never-before-seen memorabilia from the Atlanta Rhythm section to Lynyrd Skynyrd to Jimi Hendrix. You name it, it's in this pile. The jackets from Skynyrd, some of the things that came off the air crash, because they were my personal friends, when they died in the crash, that was given to me. If this can help raise money for this town, I want it done. I don't know how, but the girls are saying they're gonna try. And also, my brother is in a national group, and I have asked him to ask his friends to please join in to help do a benefit. As soon as you get your town together, where this kind of large groups could come in, they're national groups, they're not local, to raise money, to help your city. That's my guide. Building, coming back together to help others. And I want to thank you for being a part of my life and allowing me to be in this wonderful city. And I hope that I can help you, and thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Hollander. I appreciate you coming up here.
Thank you.
And the kind sentiments, and actually, it is our community, anybody who lives here, it's our community, not just, you know, those who have lived here a long time or whatever, everybody who lives here, and I know you have lived here and you're part of it, so I appreciate you coming up here this evening, and...
I don't know who to talk to about doing all this. I'm kinda like a, I'm unknown here, but...
Well, you can talk with Gina. I guess Gina's our planner, our city planner.
Gina?
Yep, that's Gina.
Hi.
So you can start with her, and if, you know, if you need any other assistance, you can certainly call me. How's that?
Thank you. I know the girls at the museum are really, they're trying to work this out, so I'm very excited.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you again.
Have a nice evening.
You too.
Thank you, I did not pass out, thank you.
We didn't bite you either. We didn't bite either.
Not yet, not yet.
All right. We have, also, we have registered tonight is Jim McCann Jr. Mr. McCann? Mr. McCann? Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh-huh.
My name is Jim McCann Jr. I moved to Belvidere in 2015. I had two friends that said, Jim, is that where the Chrysler plant is? And I said, yeah. All the rest of them, Jim, I have no idea where Belvidere is. I said, don't feel bad, Rand McNally has no idea where it is either. So it's, I tell all of my friends, it's a quiet community with friendly people, and it's like life used to be when we were younger, before the world went crazy. On March 31st, I was watching television, like a lot of other people were, and they came on and said that there had been a roof collapse at the Apollo Theater. So I saw Chief, Fire Chief Shadley, and you were the first person I thought of when I saw that. And I thought, the stress level for you must have really amped up. You know you're going to that theater, you know it's occupied, and you know the roof collapsed. So you had to be thinking, there's gotta be a lot of injuries, there could be a lot of death. Thankfully, there wasn't a lot of death. Unfortunately, that one man, Johnson, going to a place that he loves music, and it cost him his life, a very sad thing. But I saw yourself, the mayor, Chief Woody, being interviewed. And I'm thinking to myself, you and Chief Woody are placed in a situation you've never been in before in your life. And you and your responders, and Chief Woody and his responders, are expected to be the calming element in this. And they asked Chief Woody, what was it like when you got here? He said, complete chaos. I thought to myself, what other option was there? To go in and find people hurt all over? It would have to be chaos. And there were a lot of heroes that night, starting with the people that were at the concert, that rendered aid to fellow people that were at the concert. And then the fire department, who, having no regard for their own safety, went into that building, knowing part of the ceiling had just collapsed, more of it could have collapsed. The rear structure, I don't know what that was, but that building could have imploded at any time because there was no roof on it. So to put their own safety aside and go in and assist those people, and there were lots of people that were heroes that night, the people at the concert, the EMS workers, the people at the hospital that were ready to receive these people when they came, and I understand some of the people were treated by the EMS workers, and they were able to go home. They just had minor injuries. But the ones that were transported, they were admitted to the hospital, and I think after a week, all but one of them had been released, and the one girl was pretty seriously injured. When I saw both of you, and I saw you, Mayor, standing there on crutches, and anybody that's ever been on crutches knows, the ideal thing is to remain seated, don't get up if you don't have to. So with the weather conditions, I'm thinking, I wonder what time the mayor went home from this? Was it late Friday or early Saturday morning? And then Saturday, I watched it on YouTube, and it was daylight, and it was from either a drone or a helicopter, and you could clearly see the damage to the building. And at that time, I said to myself, based on results, not on my opinion, based on results, the four people that were in charge that night, the mayor, Mr. Anderson, Chief Shadle, and Chief Woody, were the four best people we could have had in that situation. I watched this meeting, the last meeting, on YouTube, hoping somebody would do what I'm doing tonight. People are quick to come here with a complaint, but they're very slow to come with a compliment. And I said, someone has to speak on behalf of all of these people, so I'm the someone. I saw when they showed both chiefs and the mayor, and then there was a guy standing next to you, I think his name is Vella?
Steve Vella?
Yeah.
Representative Vella?
I don't know who I see more, Dave Vella or Fred Grody on TV. I've seen Dave Vella, anything that's got anything to do with Belvidere, he's there. If a kid opens a lemonade stand, he'll be in the back someplace, you'll see him on television. So that night, like I said, I saw the mayor. On the Saturday, I thought, I wonder how many calls the mayor has to make and is taking today, and I still wonder that. And I think, how many contacts you have in your phone now that you did not have that Friday night? And you may have had to make many calls to get one number that you were looking for. So, yeah, all in all, the people did a fantastic job, fantastic. You know the old saying, you only have one chance to make a good first impression. You only have one chance in a catastrophe to make the right decision, and all the right decisions were made that night. So on behalf of everybody that watched it, I'd like to verbalize what they were all thinking. You all did a great job, and thank you. Mayor, I'd like to shake hands with you, but I'm afraid if I walk by the lawyer, I'll get a pill in the street.
One bite. Thank you very much. Well, I didn't mean for the city attorney to scare you off, but he can be scary, so. Anyhow, Mr. McCann, I really appreciate you coming up here, that's awful kind of you. And thank you, Mr. McCann, I appreciate it, and you're right. You know, this community, we had a lot of heroes here, especially our EMS. Chief Shadle did a remarkable, and Chief Woody, did a remarkable job with, you know, a catastrophe that certainly was unknown at the time, and we didn't know what we had, but we knew that we could depend on them to go ahead and do the right thing and get started, and we did. Mr. Anderson had, we had, as well, the streets reopened at 7:30 Saturday evening. We had the building looked at, we had had bracing, if necessary, a company to come out and brace that building, secure it, make sure that it wasn't gonna be a safety hazard for any of the pedestrians or any of the workers. And that was done in relatively short order, they were out there the next morning at 7:00 a.m., and they had more or less given a, we didn't have an engineer's stamp yet, but we did have a good foundation that that building was secure, and that happened in relatively short order, that was, you know, 12 hours. So 24 hours, we had, you know, we'd been able to accomplish a lot. Without Chief Shadle, Chief Woody, all of their rank and file, all the personnel, Mr. Anderson, all of the Public Works employees that we had, it certainly, it certainly could have been a lot slower process, and it was not. Not to mention the fact that we were able to treat, triage, transport many of the injured and get a good assessment of the situation. And I couldn't thank Chief Shadle enough. He, you know, did a remarkable job. I know he was up a long, long time and made sure that we were on the right track, and I'm very grateful for that. So I agree with you, we have a wonderful city. It's a city that, you know, we care about people, we care about our neighbors, and we also, you might say that this is, I've been here a lot longer than you have, Mr. McCain, Mr. McCann, but I would agree with you on your description of Belvidere, so. And thank you again for coming up and saying that. I know you didn't have to, but I know everybody appreciates that, I certainly do. So thank you, thank you again.
If you think about the outcome, you would have thought this had happened three or four times previous, the way everything was handled. You know, you would have thought, oh, they've got experience of doing this, and you really hadn't.
Yeah.
That made it even more amazing. I went by at 10:00 to 12:00 Sunday morning, traffic was going on State Street, the crane was in the back, there was a group of people around it, and I thought, Sunday, oh, finally the mayor's able to sit down and relax. Well, I saw on my phone an hour later the governor, I'd been there earlier in the morning, and said, his arm fits must be screaming now.
Well, you're right about that. But thank you, thank you again, awful nice of you to come here this evening, we all appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we have approval of minutes, number four. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of April 3, 2023, as presented. Could I have a motion of that effect? Thank you. Motion by Alderwoman Prather, and a second by Alderwoman Mahal. Any corrections, any errors, any comments regarding that motion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed, now's your chance. Okay, thank you. And under five, public hearing, we have none. Item six, special messages and proclamations, we have growth dimensions, Pam Fettis with us here this evening, welcome Pam. I think that mic's still on.
Yes, it is, thank you, Mayor. Just let me start by saying, just last week, I had a follow-up meeting with a site selector, and one of the comments that was made was regarding the response and the community members helping each other. They're not from this area, but they were able to see a lot of the information that was in the media, and they just said that that really attests to this community and all the good work. So, you know, I really want to say, this, stories like that, you know, I mean, we take for granted that we do it all the time, but, you know, seeing that from outside community matter, again, I just, I don't think, take it for granted, because we've seen other communities and how they respond, and it's, this is unique, and this is great. So it makes our job easier to sell our community and tell them what we feel in our hearts, what a wonderful place it is. So, thank you. I just wanted to highlight a few numbers. You know, we share our business engagement, and we've had, basically, it's been over 75 projects that we have in the pipeline. Some existing projects and some are new, there's about 30, I'm sorry, 28 that is currently in the commitment and construction phase. And we've had 32 enterprise-owned projects. Just to give you an example, I think that's actually double of what we've had last month. So you can see that the number of activity has just been elevated, as well as the investment. We, some of those projects are, include with MRS, this is Midwest Refrigeration Services, Apollo Theater, Skeneal Lot 3, Wright Valley College Technology Center, Conserve FS, Taco Bell, Murphy USA, Twin Towers, and Dollar General. We also have been invited to submit additional information and follow-up progress regarding a project that we submitted last month, and this project is a leading manufacturer for fuel and bio, fertilizer, personal care, and food and health, and they're seeking to establish a location in the U.S. as both pilot and commercial scales. So it'll serve as an anchor for the client's manufacturing operations. We're also, we met with MRS on a new project for a new, additional site that they have. They were so thrilled with the response that they've had so far with Belvidere that they are looking at Belvidere potential second site. And this, right now, they're in the due diligence stage, they're looking at cost incentives, and basically, they're looking at the community and the community response. And they really were, seemed to be happy when they met with the mayor and the city staff and DCEO. And we're hoping that they'll choose us, we are competing with Wisconsin. So cost is a factor, so we want to make sure that it's enough for return on investment, that our value in other areas really shows a better scale. We've also been assisting KUNIS with their incentives available and expansion project, as well as application projects. And we're also assisting United Facilities. Now, United Facilities is the third-party logistics company that General Mills Automotive, or, sorry, General Mills Distribution Company is, there should be a center, is looking to manage their facility. So we have connected them with training providers and workforce organizations for onboarding and employment. They're looking, they've already hired their manage, basically, operations manager, they now are looking at their other management for June, July, and they're looking to onboard hourly staff in October. And finally, I just wanted to highlight that we're facilitating meetings for the Enterprise Zone Committee to modify levels of incentives based on their, based on business investment. And we'll be assisting the taxing bodies with an application to the state of Illinois, as well as public hearings, ordinances, and resolutions, as well as letters of support. So I'm available if there's any questions and...
Any questions for Ms. Fettis? Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, Pam.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, item seven, moving along here, item seven, we have approval of expenditures. First, we have general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $3,451,396.84. Could I get a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderman McGee, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any questions, any comments regarding the packet that's in front of you this evening? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve general and special fund expenditures, will when your name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And then we have water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of 712, excuse me, $712,195.60. Could I have a motion of that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any questions regarding that motion on the floor? All right, hearing none, all those will when your name is called, answer aye, any opposed, nay, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item eight, committee reports and minutes of city officers. For the record, items A through G have been placed on file with the clerk's office, and we have item H, minutes of the committee of the whole building planning, zoning, and public works of April 10, 2023. Could I have a motion of that effect for their approval, please? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Porter. Any questions, any comments regarding that motion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposed, motion passed, thank you. Item nine, unfinished business, we have none. Item 10, new business, we have item A, resolution 2023-14. Item 10, new business, we have item A, Resolution 2023-14. And that is a resolution authorizing the city representative to sign loan documents for loans from the Public Water Supply Loan Program. Could I have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, do I get a second? Second by Alderman Porter. Any questions, any concerns regarding that? We've already seen this at committee level. If there's any questions, though, feel free. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of Resolution 2023-14, will answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And next, we have motions of planning and zoning. Chairman Porter.
Thank you, Mayor. A is motion to approve the request for a temporary use permit to hold the Welcome to Spring Festival on May 27th, 28th, and 29th, 2023 in the parking lot of the Fiesta Market and RP Lumber.
All right, I guess unbeknownst to you, any of the council members, but it was just made aware to me, to the staff, that RP Lumber, I guess, is not going to give up, give their parking lot space this year. So I would ask if we could amend that motion to exclude at the end and RP Lumber? If I could get a motion to amend? Motion, motion by Alderwoman Frank, second by Alderman Porter. So the motion as amended just removes the last and RP Lumber as part of that motion? Any questions regarding that? If not, all those in favor of the motion to amend, will answer aye when their name is called. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, so then we have the amended motion on the floor for a vote. Is there any other discussion regarding that? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, motion on the floor then? Will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay, thank you. Motion passed, Alderman Porter.
Okay, B, motion to approve the special use extension for 425 Beloit Road Casey's for one year.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Any questions regarding that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor then, regarding the special use extension for Casey's for one year? Will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And Chairman Porter, C.
Okay, C, motion to consent and to, and approve the reappointment of Sonia Dobberfall to the Belvedere Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term ending in April 30th, 2026.
All righty, thank you. We have that motion out of committee. If there's any discussion regarding that appointment, that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor then, will answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls, as a clerk calls a roll, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And motion out of public works. Alderman Snow, would you help us out here?
D, motion to approve the low bid from NTAC Track Group in the amount of $1,432,009.73 for the Irene Road realignment project. This work will be paid from, from the I.EDP funds, the DCEO grant funds, and the I.TARP funds.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. As you all recall, the NTAC group was the low bid on this, on this realignment project. We have that motion out of committee. Any questions regarding that? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, will, when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. We have motions out of finance personnel. Chairman Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. E, motion to renew the city of Belvedere's life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance with Voya for the terms as shown in documents from Gallagher dated March 8th, 2023.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. If there's any questions regarding that motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, will, when their name is called, answer aye. If there's any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item F, Chairman Burton?
F, motion to consent to the appointment of Carlos G. Villarreal to Fire and Police Commission to fulfill the remaining term of Ed Gonzalez.
Okay, we have that motion out of committee. Regarding that motion, I did want to say, mention this. I should have mentioned this at the committee level. But when I was an alderman, there was at one point that we had appointed, the, the city council had to vote on an appointment for a police and fire commissioner. And there was never a resume given. I know that the council members have been provided a resume that was attached originally to this. But I did want to, I did want to mention that because I think it is very, very important. I think when you have somebody that you're going to put into a position like that, I think you need to have a resume. You have it. But I did not read Mr. Villarreal's resume. So if Chairman Burton will, won't mind, I will, I will read that. Mr. Carlos Villarreal was born in Texas. He's been in Illinois for 60 years. He's lived the last 40 in Belvedere. He's married here in Belvedere to his wife of 42 years, married in 1980. Has three children and eight grandchildren. He graduated from Fenton High School in 1970, Bensonville, Illinois. He attended College of DuPage in Glen Allen, Illinois. After one semester, he joined the United States Air Force, served as a medic. Worked with the Air Force Flying Hospitals out of Vietnam. He received an honorable discharge in 1975. He served in the United States Navy Reserve Unit at Great Lakes Naval Base. His time living in Belvedere, he served as president of the Belvedere Alerta, director of sports for the Belvedere YMCA, on the board of Rockford Girl Scouts, belongs to the Belvedere Moose Club. He did run for aldermen and school board. And he says here that the results weren't in his favor. He currently works for, part-time, for the Belvedere High School Sports Department. He runs the scoreboard, clock, and spotter. And I believe the mission here is to, to hire the best qualified applicants for our community. He wants to provide up-to-date training and technology that is available to police officers and firemen. And he's honored and humbled at this opportunity. And he will do his very best for our community. And I have known Mr. Villarreal for many, many years. And I see him, recently, I see him, he collects tickets for a lot of the events at Belvedere North High School or at the track or at events at the gymnasium. So he's been a wonderful member of this community. And I was certainly proud to be able to represent him. But I thought his resume should be read for all the reasons that I had stated previously. So anyhow, we have that motion for the appointment out of committee. If there's any questions, more than happy to answer them. All right, hearing none. All those in favor? When their name is called, please answer aye. Any opposed, nay. As a clerk calls a roll, please.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mohal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
All right, thank you. And thank you, Chairman Burton. Motions out of public safety, Chairman Stevens?
Motion to authorize executing the non-exclusive license agreement between Skanel Properties and the city of Belvedere.
All right, and as with the earlier, one of the earlier motions, I would ask if I could get an amendment to that. I think that that was just for the Belvedere Fire Department. But it also, where the Belvedere Police Department is going to do some training on that property as well. So if I could have an amendment to add, to include the Belvedere Police Department in that, motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any questions or concerns regarding the amendment? Alderman Snow?
I think it already does. I'm just glad we're at this end of the conversation. All those have been changed.